Good evening, committee members. I'd like to start the meeting. It is Tuesday, May 1st. I will begin at 6:10. Thank you for being here as we commence the school budget meetings. We have a number of budget meetings set up depending on how things go. And we have a full committee here along with our superintendent Herb Levine, Assistant Superintendent Kara Mertag, our business manager Jared Stanton. I did want to make some opening statements as I typically do when we commence the budget talks, and then we'll turn over to Dr. Levine for his summary. And I certainly say this every year, and this year being no different. We are working on the city budget, and certainly there are a number of challenges that the city is faced with that certainly has an impact on all of our department budgets, from the schools, which is certainly the largest, to police, fire, DPW, library, and all the remaining departments in the city. This year, some of the challenges have been in health insurance. Health insurance, and it certainly had an impact, and you'll hear from Dr. Levine shortly. We were notified that the health insurance increase was 9.9 percent this year, which is approximately $2 million increase. The last couple of years it'd been a little bit better than that, but this year 9.9 percent, certainly a significant increase that we've had to work around as we have our budget discussions in all the different departments. Our retirement obligations went up over $400,000 as a community, and that's just something that is given to us by PARAC, the Public Employees Retirement Committee. They provide us with our number based on their analysis, and that's just a bill that has to be paid. So that went up $400,000 this year. We have all of our union contracts expire on June 30th across the city. As you all know, we've been in talks with just about every union right now. Certainly Brandy Carpenter and Joe Amico and John Olympia have been working on some school budgets, some school negotiations. And as mayor, I certainly support a cost of a living adjustment for all of our employees. And that certainly, though, has an impact on the budget, but I think that is something that's deserved as we move forward. But the big issue this year, and it was certainly something that we were not expecting, all of those are typical, the ones I mentioned earlier, as well as some other obligations, are typical ones that we have to work around. But this year, what was unexpected was a fire at the Coolidge Water Treatment Plant in South Peabody, which covers about 70 percent of our water needs across the city. We had that fire last year, complete loss of the building, and we had to turn over under the emergency to Mass Water Resource Authority, the MWRA. That came at a significantly higher cost for the city of Peabody and its residents. We expect to have the Coolidge Water Treatment Plant back online in May. We're very close, they're doing some testing now, so we expect that to be back on when we will go back to city water. Typically, we, the city water is about 70 percent, and the MWRA is 30 percent. For the last year, we've had to rely on the MWRA water 100 percent, which again really caused some real challenges for us. We do get some insurance proceeds to cover the cost of the water, but we were 100 percent coverage for the actual reconstruction of the building, and then we got $1 million in incidentals and other costs. The, almost the full 100, excuse me, the full 1 million will go towards water, but we're looking at another 2 million, in the range of 2 million on top of that. So that is a bill that has to be paid. We've looked into trying to see if we could borrow that money and pay it off over time at a low interest rate. We were denied that ability. Our state representatives Ted Spiliotis and Tom Walsh are seeing if we could have applied to the state, made a motion to the state to see if we can get some assistance, but I'm not holding out much hope for that. So as of right now, we would be looking to pay $2 million in above what our typical budget would be. Every year, I always feel that the investments for our community to be strong, and what I think has worked for us over the last few years, are investments in education and investments in public safety. Certainly, those kind of been the priority for me, and I know for many, and I want to continue to do that. I think we've made some great strides as a school committee, as school administration. Certainly, the biggest being the Higgins Middle School, which is in its second year, but also I think we've made some tremendous strides in technology, and we've made some investments in special education, transportation, things that we needed to do as a community to move the district forward, and I'm very proud of that, and I think all of us are. This year, though, because of these concerns, there is, there's going to be some difficult challenges for us, some difficult decisions that we're going to need to make. I'm looking at Dr. Levine, his proposal is summary to us, and I see a projected mayor contribution of 1.8 million. That is a little bit more than I was intending to give, but I appreciate Dr. Levine's efforts to put that forward. But we'll work through that as we move along. I want to try to continue the momentum that we've made. I think we're making an impact in a positive way, but certainly I need to make sure that our costs are in line and that we hold tight to certain financial requirements to the city. And, you know, I just wanted to open with that as I typically do. I could certainly talk in much more detail about that and give you some other items on the budget that we've been wrestling with, but those are the big ones. Health insurance, our union negotiations, retirement obligations, but the biggest concern this year has been water. The good news is I think that's just a one-time item. We make the payment, and then it's behind us, and then we move on with city business, which is providing our own water to our city. But this year, there's an extra $2 million that's due on top of what our typical budget increase would be. So with that, I wanted to turn it over to Dr. Levine to move forward with the summary, and then we'll certainly open it up for discussion moving forward. Dr. Levine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to say that I was at the McCarthy School today reading to preschoolers, and at the end, we always take a big group photo, and there was a little girl and little boy on my lap, and about 48 other kids around me, and they were taking pictures, and the little girl said, "Do you have gum in your mouth?" And I said, "Yes." And she said, "You have nice teeth." So I just want you to know what kind of an impact I have on the kids when I read. It was a wonderful experience. The far year '18 budget that we're presently working on is 71.894 million dollars, as you can see. And the proposed level service budget, that is, we did not consider any requested increases from any principals or directors, although they made them. We did not consider them. Still leaves us with a projected delta of $6,47,611. Some of the budget drivers the mayor has already referred to. One of the largest will be the increase in health insurance. Another will be an increase in special education tuition. Some of the others, miscellaneous contract services, dues and fees, our technology plan. Some utilities have gone up, Medicare, in district transportation contract, and athletics and performing arts, and some of the building lease. So that combined with other increases that we have projected, we are looking at a six ma, over a $6 million delta, and we have to make that up. We have to get to zero. So my team and I have worked over many, many meetings and many hours in creating different iterations of what the budget might look like, and this is what we're ready to hand to you as our recommendations, knowing that you will have recommendations for change, as you always do, and that is your right. This is your budget. Until the day you give it to me and vote it, it is your budget to make and create. I did project a $1.8 million contribution from the mayor. We have anticipated additional revenue of $300,000. We're pretty sure of $200,000 of that because the legislature has worked very hard to increase the special ed circuit breaker funding, and that should be about a $200,000 increase for Peabody. Right now, it looks like it's going to be at around 72 percent. Is that right? Which is better for us. And thank you for all the work that you and Tom and all of our people at the State House did to support that. We really appreciate that. $100,000, I wrote a grant for kindergartens, and Tom Walsh sponsored that grant for us, and we think that we may be getting 100. It passed its first test of $100,000. I had asked for 200,000. Getting 100,000 is a lot of money these days in the state budget. If it passes the test in the Senate and eventually gets signed into the budget, we will receive that other 100,000. So I am optimistically projecting that we'll receive that in new revenue. I have made, and you have the sheet of proposed reductions. I will not read the sheet, but I will highlight some areas for you. We have also some proposed additions. One is contract obligation. At the middle school, we cannot go beyond 112 per cluster. With the large amount of kids, the large number of kids coming in from the fifth grade and the small class leaving, the eighth grade, we will surpass that number if we don't add a cluster. So I am stating to you that the 140,000 is for two teachers. The cluster will be three or four teachers. I have asked Todd to create those other teaching spots internally from what he has in his school, which he has agreed to do. We have met a couple of times on that issue, and, but the 140,000 needs to stay in the budget as an increase because of contractual obligations, if nothing else. The $65,000 left that I am proposing to you is something that I think its time has come. The Brown School needs a full-time assistant principal. It has a part-time assistant principal. I don't think it can function very well anymore without a full-time assistant principal. We are losing a veteran, longtime, wonderful, I don't know how else to describe her, principal, who is there 24/7 and is one of the great advocates of kids that I have ever worked with in my life. We're losing her, so we'll be hiring a new principal at the Brown. We have lost our assistant principal who has left the school system, and it's a good time to move this to a full-time job. We already have some money budgeted because we already have part of that position available. We figured it'll cost us about $65,000 to make that a full-time assistant principal position. Remember that this is one of the most complex schools in our district. It has a very high number of special education kids and programs, and if even one or two of those kids has a bad day, it can tie up our administrators all day long. I've seen it. I've actually witnessed it. I've been there when it's happened. I believe very strongly that we need a full-time assistant principal at the Brown. If you would go on to the next page, it is the first iteration of budget reductions that I and my team made, but we then went on to put back some of the things that, we readjusted the budget, put back some of the cuts, and wound up with what is the last page, which is the final reductions dated 5/1 that I have recommended to you. And in deference and due respect to my union friends who are here, the very first reduction is a reduction of two days from the calendar to professional development days, which will get us about $550,000 out of the budget. And the reason that I'm recommending that, and by the way, no one wants to do that. You know, we grinded about that because professional development is critical to a school system moving forward. It's important to support our teachers and our administrators in getting them as much professional development as possible. But in this particular budget, this particular year, as the mayor has said, is basically an anomaly with a debt service that the city has in this particular year that they will not have moving forward. We have to do our part in the school budget, and that's a large chunk of money. That's essentially nine teachers. So in order to save those teaching positions or other things in the budget that would have to be cut, I am recommending that for this year, not necessarily for the second and the third year of the contract, but for this year coming forward, FY '19, that we reduce the number of professional days that we have by two. The rest of the up-top non-personnel reductions speak for themselves. In many cases, we believe that we can make do. We have estimated health insurance a little bit less than the number originally proposed. We think we can make that up because there will be a reduction of people, and that does help the health insurance issue. We also believe that we can live with the maintenance reduction, although nobody likes doing that, but those are some of the things that we have to give up as we move through a budget that is very, very tight. The technology plan, I did want to speak to the technology plan. That's $130,000 reduction. What that won't allow us to do next year is to finish the technology plan with the kindergarten grade-one Chromebook cuts. However, we can still move forward a year ahead of time and have a 6 through 12 one-to-one Chromebook program, so that we're a year ahead. Next year, only the juniors were going to have it, but we're actually including juniors and seniors next year, which makes us a year ahead in the technology plan. So for one year, I am suggesting that we don't finish up at the kindergarten grade-one and that we keep this as a reduction in technology. We have moved ahead tremendously in technology. The school committee and mayor have allowed us to move tremendously. We are one of the, I think, the grandest school systems in the area with technology, even in some of our older buildings. I think that we can afford this particular slowdown at this particular time. I did want to go to reductions of personnel. Regarding classroom teachers, I believe that at least half of these will be retirements and other openings that don't have people in them or other openings where people may be leaving the system. I believe that will be at least half of these people. I think that when all is said and done with retirements, openings, and people leaving the district, that most, if not all, of the 10 reductions will not be people who are presently here that we want to keep. They will be openings that we have that we can move these people to other areas. So I have to reduce the number of positions, but not necessarily the number of people. We will be able to keep most of the people here that we want to keep because of attrition. Library paraprofessionals, originally I took them all. I have put back half, which means to me that the best way to manage that would be to bring back our library paraprofessionals, but at fewer hours every day. Same school, but fewer hours, and we would have to fill that in with volunteers. Paraprofessionals throughout the district, I did want to explain that to you. The $150,000 reduction, at least some of that, $50,000 to $75,000 will be charged off to a grant, so that's part of the reduction. It's not all people. And the rest will be a slight reduction in the number of par, we have over 200 and some odd paraprofessionals in the district. I believe that we can afford to combine some of the services that we have in a slight reduction. Two custodians. Originally, I had five. One of the custodial positions that I'm recommending is one that is not filled right now. We just wouldn't fill it. Another would be a reduction of one custodian, and that would be the last hired, whoever that person is. A high school dean. We have talked multiple times to the high school principal, and he has talked to his high school administration. I would remind you that we have 450 fewer kids today than when I started here in 2011. Much of that is due to the Essex Tech. Some of that is just due to smaller classes coming in, like we have this year. The eighth grade is a small class. I believe the high school and the middle school will be about the same number of kids. I believe that they can afford, at least at this time, a reduction of a high school dean. Higgins housemaster, the same thing. I met with Todd and his people. Kara and I have had multiple conversations with them. Yesterday, we had our final meeting, and he and his people have actually recommended that they will move things around to account for this position being cut. Very little clerical. A guidance position, and that would be at the high school. We were going to take two positions in the last budget. We only took one. I believe that we can take one more due to the lower number of students. Library power at the, either the high school or the middle school, we haven't made that decision yet. That will depend upon further discussion. The PANS program at night has two teachers and a director. We believe it can operate with one teacher and a director, and an attendance power at the high school. As you see, the additions include the Higgins teacher and a full-time assistant principal at Brown with the appropriate number next to it, and the additional revenue that we expect to have from the kindergarten grant and special education circuit breaker. With that, school committee and Mr. Mayor, I know that this is not delightful, but it's a lot better than the original list of cuts that I had, if you look through the original list of cuts. And I will take your direction as you make changes to this budget and find whatever it is that you direct me to find. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Levine. Open it up to the committee members.
I'll start us off. Thank you, Dr. Levine. Just have a couple of, well, just a few questions as I was going through the binder past week or so, and not going to ask all my questions right now, but just some general questions. Regarding special ed, I noticed there was a lot of reductions in the West therapeutic program, and there was a guidance intervention counselor that's no longer budgeted. Can you talk a little bit about some of those shifts?
I'm going to turn that over to Jared, because I do believe that that's more of a budget book movement than actual shift in people.
Okay, right.
Jared?
Thank you. Like last year, it's just budget cleanup. We're moving people to the actual schools that they are in. So the West therapeutic program is actually going to be budgeted out of the West school.
Okay.
And the other position you were talking about, I believe, is budgeted out of a grant.
Okay. That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure.
It just got very confusing when we went into Accounting Unit 17, which is special ed, in trying to figure out where the people were housed, especially as the payroll and business manager's perspective, and it made sense to move them to the schools that they were at. I think this will be the last year of that.
Okay. Great. Let's see. I had a question regarding, under transportation, there was under lease payments for the two new buses. Those are, are those leases bargain buyouts? In other words, when the lease is over, are we purchasing those buses for a dollar or some real cheap amount?
I want, I believe we are. I can get back to you on that, on the buyout cost, but I believe it is, a dollar does sound right. But I'll get you that answer.
Yeah, I just, I see leases, and I'm just thinking, okay, is it more efficient to purchase the buses? But if it's a bargain, you know, purchase at the end of the lease, then that's great.
Right. And a lot of those, we don't want to pay more in fixing it. So it doesn't, some do not make sense to purchase.
Right. Okay. It'd just be, this is more going forward type of thing. Then under administration, there's a few things that I was wondering about. Is that under contracted services? Can you, let's see. There was, there were some amounts for Futures Management, Mass Insight, other contracts, and Superintendent's Mentor Program. Can you just expand on, you know, what those are really, you know, what those are for and?
Sure. A couple of them anyway, I can, and maybe Kara and Jared can fill in. Futures Management and, what was the other one, Mass Insight?
Yeah.
Futures Management is a consulting company that helped us in the last two years trying to build climate and rapport at the high school. Did a lot of work with our staff. Although that contract is done now, and has been done for quite some time, it was in force for part of this year. Mass Insight is a professional development group that we belong to. It drives a lot of our AP courses, and it provides a great deal of professional development in the AP arena and others, other things as well.
Okay. And then there's an amount for $10,000, other contracts, and the Superintendent's Mentor Program, 40.
The $10,000 is for other contracted service that we will have throughout the year. We're trying to piece that together now, and the Superintendent's Mentor Program will be me as first-year superintendent.
Okay. Okay. And is that to, is that to like a Futures type of place, or what?
Yeah, it could be. It could be. It's whomever it is that she's comfortable with.
Okay.
Or whatever it is that she's comfortable with.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Olympia. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Through the chair to the superintendent. In regards to the Futures, I remember having this conversation before. It was my recollection that they were a one-time consulting firm that kind of did like a special education audit, and we really only needed them like once every five years. So I'm kind of confused. Do we still have them? Do we still need them? Is this $30,000 that we can save?
It's two different companies. So the Futures Education, which is based in Springfield, did the one-time special education audit. They're gone, they're done.
Okay.
This is Future Management Systems, which is based in Beverly at the Cummings Center, and they are a professional development organization. And then, yes, this is, this is no longer in effect. We will not be spending much of that money with Futures, anyway. It's professional development money.
So when you say it's no longer in effect, is this $30,000 that we can now figure in and save something else?
Well, maybe, but Kara may want to use that as professional development. You know, we've cut professional development in some other areas, so we don't want to cut everything that we have, which will leave us no pliability. I'll use Tom Brady's word. No pliability, no flexibility for, to doing some professional development needs to be done during the year. So I would suggest not cutting back too far in areas like that because we've already taken money from those line items.
Understood. Just thinking, if we use that money in this budget elsewhere, and then if we needed the professional development or those type of services, we can pick it up as we go, just to save something now with that instead.
Have we, have we already taken that? We don't want to spend money twice. Have we already taken that money, or do we have that budgeted in the professional development area?
This is still budgeted.
Still budgeted. So you could do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Open it up for any other school committee members. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staying on that page, under the Superintendent's Mentor Program, is that the, the new Superintendent Induction Program?
Yes. It is, right. Mass, M-A-S-S. I believe it's the Mass Association of School Superintendents Superintendent Induction Program.
Right.
Yes.
That one's paid over three years, so really, we would only need a third of that amount in this budget because of the way that they administer it. So we could reduce that as well. I was told it was $10,000.
Yeah. That's what I thought, Ms. Dunn.
Yeah. So we could reduce that.
No, that's two different areas they're talking about.
Mr. Dunn, what's that line item? What's the, it's?
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry. It's, um...
441.
Oh, thank you. Who was it?
It's a tab, tab 22. And the supporting material is 1, 2, 3, 4, the fifth page of the tab.
Thank you. But, Mrs. Dunn, your understanding is that it could be paid over three years?
Yes.
We'll double-check that, but yeah, okay. We'll certainly look at that.
On that point, Mr. Olympia?
Yeah. Through the chair, maybe that other contracts is the $10,000 that maybe you were thinking about? Because that was my understanding, too.
Yeah, that was what I had been told at the training. So if we can look into that, that would be very helpful.
Still you? You're all set, Mrs. Dunn?
I reserve the right to keep coming back.
I thought you might. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Olympio?
Yeah. Through the chair, I know it's a small amount, but the admin supplies jumped up $9,200? Is there?
The reason for that is because it was cut last year, and these are the actual costs. This year, we're currently trying to, it's over budget and we're transferring other lines to cover that, but those are the actual costs.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olympio. Mrs. Cappender?
Thank you. Different topic unless somebody else wanted to jump on that page.
No, please.
Okay. Through the chair, Dr. Levine, just wondering about the Higgins House Master, the reduction on that in comparison to the fact that we have to add a new cluster. Is that realistic?
Well, there were two things on the table, either a house master or a guidance counselor. They went back and they looked at the choices that they had, and they much prefer to keep the guidance counselor, and they think they can work around the house master, the loss of the house master. I don't think that, they are going up a little bit in population, which will bring them over the contracted number, contractual number, but they're not going up so much that I think that will make much of a difference in how they administer the school. And there is a retirement coming forward in that group, so nobody has to be cut from that. It's just not going to be filled.
Understood. Thank you.
I actually had a flag in, under maintenance, let's see, it's line item 383, maintenance craftsman. Looks like we added another full-time equivalent for $54,003.07. Is that?
That was a position that was reduced last year, but it wasn't actually reduced. So, it was reduced from the budget last year.
Yeah.
But that position, I think it was reduced other places and it was not reduced. I think it reduced a custodian instead, but it's really not an add. It's just, it's a position that wasn't budgeted in that line item last year that now is where it should be.
Okay.
We didn't increase the maintenance.
We didn't?
We did not.
Okay. All right.
Is, in our maintenance, are there openings in that or is that a filled position?
That is a filled position.
Okay. I'll send Mr. Olympio. Mr. Huckman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your opening remarks tonight. Thank you, Dr. Levine, for your opening remarks tonight. So, sticking on Mr. Olympio's point before I delve into some thoughts I have, through the chair to whomever in the administration, are you saying that we voted last year's budget to eliminate a craftsman position from the budget and that didn't occur?
I don't recall that. We're going to have to check that because I don't recall that.
But somehow, it seems at least, and look, it's a big budget and there's a lot of lines, and it seems at least that if there wasn't a reduction of a crafts person, that the salary for that position wasn't in line 383. Because according to Mr. Stanton, the amount in line 383 for the FY '19 budget is an accurate reflection of the expense that has been experienced. So, if we can check on that, I don't want to get too much into that right now.
I'll have an answer for you tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I may, Mr. Mayor. So, I'll start with the Higgins new cluster. The contract is what the contract is, although we are presently negotiating the contract. My memory is, and I have a very, 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 very clear memory on this because it frustrated me beyond belief three years ago when we budgeted for one less cluster but didn't reduce any staff members at the Higgins. What we wound up doing with the staff members that were the four primary, teachers of the primary courses in that cluster was we utilized them for some specials for some, and beneficial. No argument. It took me a long time to put my hands around and accept that we're keeping the people and we're keeping the salaries associated with them in order to improve instruction, and I think that that took place. I think that there were some benefits to, significant benefits to our, the kids that attended those programs and there was some, but I don't think we lost any of those four people, four core teachers unless they've retired since then. So, I don't know why we would need to hire two new teachers to fill out that cluster. We may need to lose some specials, but I don't know why we would need to hire two teachers if we never lost any of the four in the beginning. So, I'll ask you, Dr. Levine, if you can enlighten me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two responses. That, although we're negotiating right now, we're at the end of negotiations and that is not on the table. Secondly, we believe that the programs that Mr. Bucy and his staff put in place to utilize those specialists has made a significant and marked difference in some of the kids who struggle most in areas like ELA and mathematics. We do not want to lose those positions. Mr. Bucy is willing to find two of the positions internally without losing those specialist positions, and I'm funding two in the budget, or at least I'm proposing that we fund two in the budget. And the reason is exactly what you just said, to keep the quality of academic instruction the way it is without retreating.
Yeah. If I may, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Dr. Levine. It may be something that I at least want to look a little further into at some point in this process. I don't mind, that's not the right terminology. I can accept the additional services that we never lost. I mean, excuse me, we never lost the positions or the personnel and provided additional services when times were better, but we're looking at some, not fairly, but really dramatic decisions here. And that may be something that we could talk about later. I just wanted to at least touch on it today. So, with regard to the negotiations that are taking place, and I don't know where we are in the process, but knowing that the health insurance premiums have a significant increase this year, and who knows? It's one of those difficult things to predict. Is there any, is the contribution for staff towards their health insurance on the table for these negotiations?
It is not.
All right. And if I may, through the chair to, if I can talk to Mr. Stanton, I had an opportunity to run into him this morning, and I kind of gave him a little preview of a few items that I'd like to talk about. We've talked in the past, and I see Ms. Ruby is here, and Ruby, excuse me, and thank you for coming, and for everyone else that's here, for the staff. We've talked in the past about records, and the special education department is a paper-driven department through statutory obligations and regulations that are throughout the state. And we've talked in the past about digitizing records that we already have that are hopefully being maintained at the Kylie in its, whatever state of, state it's in. But moving forward, I've asked for digitizing documents, and I don't want to pick on special education, but it is a more paper-driven department than most. I think throughout the city, throughout the school department, we should be digitizing as many documents as we can from two years ago forward. I mean, I'll settle for this year forward, July 1 forward. And so, I asked Mr. Stanton earlier today if he can give me a number on paper. What do we spend on paper as a school department?
Through the chair, and I looked into that. It's actually quite tricky. The way that the district does the paper is it comes out of discretionary supplies. So, we don't have a paper line. We have a copier line, which is on the district level, but we don't have a paper line. So, if I'm at the Brown School, paper comes out of the office supplies. If I'm at the Burke School, same thing. So, I don't have an answer for you yet. I wanted to give you a true answer. What I would do is I would go in and look in the system, probably pull some Rex, W. Mason, that's where we get a lot of our paper. So, I don't have an answer. If I had to do a rough estimate, it would probably be in the, you know, $200,000 to $300,000 range.
Okay. And, oh, yes, Dr. Levine?
Just to address your other issue, we did some research with our special ed attorney. I thank Mrs. Ruby for doing that research, and our special ed attorney gave us a wonderful answer. He said that, because I asked the question, is it legal to do special ed documents and special ed signatures online? And it is, actually. And that can take the place of paper in many instances. However, he cautions against it for security reasons. He feels that we need to continue to produce the paper that we're continuing. He also talked about discriminatory practices with people that don't have access to computers as easily as others, so he recommends strongly against it.
Yeah. No, thank you, Dr. Levine, and maybe, maybe we're misunderstanding each other. I'm not, I believe paper records are important, and certainly people who require a document, a paper, physical document in order to receive it should. However, I think that there's a lot of, a lot more than one copy of an IEP or other documents that are floating around. That's what I'm looking to curtail and think that, first, not only for the cost of the paper, but for the amount of time it takes to, you know, you digitize it, you download it on a, either an external drive or a computer, and then, you know, Ms. Ruby calls her department and says, can you get me, you know, Jane Doe's IEP, because I need to review it? There's a hearing coming up or something like that. It's a desktop, it goes to a desktop, and she's able to review it without a staff person getting up, going to a copier, spending time and money on paper and toner and all that other stuff. I think that a physical copy is important. I agree with you. I'm not looking to eliminate that. And again, I don't mean to pick on Ms. Ruby's department. I think that there are efficiencies that we could utilize throughout the school department. I think work orders are still being used with carbon paper or carbonless paper as opposed to electronic. I mean, there are just certain areas where we can grab a little bit of money. I don't think it's a lot of money in the big scheme of a 72 or $74 million budget, but we're going to get faced at the, at the end of this budget with making some perhaps personnel decisions that I'd like to avoid if we can look at some of those other areas.
Just one quick response on that. I think you're aware of this. We are digitalized in many ways, excuse me, through Eastbed. So, special ed does do a lot of their work on, online at this point.
And if I can just finish up this area, please don't take anything I'm saying as a criticism.
No, no, no.
Yeah, I'm just trying to look at, you know, ways of least impact reductions.
Yeah, we should look at efficiencies, and we will.
Thank you, Mr. Huckman. Mr. Miko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair to the admin team, on the utilities, I did notice an $80,000 increase or 12.45% increase in electric utilities. Is that something that's being carried over from a department or what's the increase there?
What we did is a five-year actual. I worked with Dave Gamache, Tim Healy, and electrical is going up. So, we put the $80,000 increase in that electrical line. Some years are higher, some years are lower, but we thought an $80,000 increase would be suffice for next year.
Mrs. Cappender?
Thank you, through the chair. I have some questions in the athletics department. I noticed that there is a $20,500 increase in equipment. What is that for?
A lot of it's through Rydell football in some of the, trying to fix some of the equipment that was pushed off in previous budgets. So, I think a lot of it is fixing the Rydell equipment for the football.
For the football helmets and such?
Yeah.
And I was putting together the gate receipts and the user fees. So, the result of a vote that we had taken, which was great, letting all of our students come in, did that come out to be $37,000?
The, what we anticipate for lost in revenue on user fees, on gate receipts is $16,000, and the true number, due to the increase of the free and reduced lunch and the number of students that are playing the sports, we felt that the user fees number had to be reduced, I think, to $95,000.
Okay. So, that was just a projected?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had continually projected higher than what we actually got. So, this is, this is a truer number.
That's more, okay.
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't, why don't we take a five-minute break if we could and then resume if there's no objection?
No objection. Doc Shens, it does make me pause because of the way we have our schools structured, you know, the high school, we have a dean for each house. The Higgins, we have a house master for each grade. Those were all implemented because the actual goal and the proven improvement for any school is not only lowering your class sizes, but also trying to make a school, you know, as a smaller learning community. And I know that in some instances, that's a very specific term, but overall, what you want to do when you have a large school is you want to make it less intimidating to the students, and you want to have the staff that know the students. And it's been a very good system. We are here at Higgins, you've had a grade-level house master who has followed the sixth grade into seventh and into the eighth, and then they rotate back through again. As a matter of fact, with that system and the cluster system, we are sitting in a building that was one of the first MSBA ever allowed to be designed to accommodate the program. Originally, they wanted us to just take a blueprint off the shelf, which would have been a high school building, and it would have been structurally set up totally different. So, after they heard about our program, they allowed us to go ahead and design the building to accommodate our program. And now, this is actually turning into a model where they're allowing other schools to do that. At the high school, one of the biggest pieces on that social-emotional balancing that's so important now has been, again, to have someone that the students end up working with through their placement, you know, they're all placed A, B, or C house. And my concern is changing that can change the impact we can have on students. So, some of this is very difficult because it's very different, and those have been longstanding systems. And I know in a budget, everything, you know, we have a lot of trade-offs. We have a lot of things that we, we can't get everything we want, and I know that. But trying to limit the impact as much as possible on the delivery of services to the students is where I really do need to think about some of these and not knowing the actual, the actual location of some of these changes, you know, we just found that out, so it's important to know that.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. One question I did have on, Dr. Levine, if you could go through, in terms of the paraprofessionals, again, there's five FTEs at $150,000, but I do know with the asterisks there, could you maybe just explain that again to me or to us?
So, $50,000 of that reduction will actually come from a 240 grant, which is a special education grant that allows us to pay for some personnel. The other $100,000 will actually come from bodies, and we're going to have to reduce the number of paraprofessionals that we have by at least the number of paraprofessionals that we have by at least three folks. And that's, you know, I believe we had at last count 213, somewhere around? 213 paraprofessionals. I think that reducing by a small number will not put a tremendous burden on the school system.
And the custodians, the two bodies, the two FTEs, are those filled positions now, or maybe just explain where those stand?
One is unfilled. I directed that we not fill the position when it came open, knowing that this would be a difficult budget year. And the other would be the last hire in the school district, whoever that person may be.
How long have we been without that one position? Has that been?
Yeah, a few months, a few months. Few months.
Few months?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there, has there been much of a concern about that? Is that, was that just the second floater position? Because we have, minus the thing, we have two floaters?
Yes.
So there was one floater not hired, so we have one floater right now?
I believe that's the case.
Correct. The other floater went in to really cover that position. So, yeah.
Okay.
So we have one.
Yeah. Would you be, would we be able to, for our next meeting, maybe have a breakdown of some class sizes?
Sure.
Particularly at the high school? Well, actually, class sizes for, for all, but I know certainly the reduction in students over the last several years at the high school, you know, that'd be helpful to have that sense as well as to what the numbers are in those classrooms. I mean, really, having 450 students since 2011, that's almost a whole grade. You know, when I, when I was in school, our class was 450. I'm sure you remember, yours was probably the same, Mr. Olympio. Mr. Miko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair to Dr. Levine and Mrs. Maritake, could we also get, on these potential reductions here, could we also get retirements out of that and potential non-renewals on that?
For the, for the?
For, for, for any?
The 10 FTEs?
Yeah, for the 10 teachers.
Sure. I can share with you the retirements and the number of non-renewals.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure, thank you.
And may I address your, your other issue?
And by the way, I just graduated a few years ago.
Yes, I see that.
And Mr. Arnold, who was your graduating class?
I was waiting for it. Say that again.
What was your graduating class?
2012.
No, well, how many students, you remember?
Oh, I don't, I don't remember. I don't know what the.
It's a long time ago.
I think Mrs. Dunn, yours was about 800?
Biggest is class.
Yeah. Well, it was definitely.
So mine was 450.
Last 76.
So some, some years ago.
Well, I was a baby boomer, so mine was almost 800 as well at Revere High School.
But I am not as old as you. Put that in the record.
Yep.
But they told us in Revere, we only had to come to school one every other five days, so.
We only went three years.
Just, just to address your issue, I would be able to supply you with the class sizes that we presently have at the high school. We would be, we haven't projected yet, and we haven't done the schedule yet for next year. So I can't tell you what it would look like for next year, but it would be not too dissimilar to give you this year's class sizes. I can run that for you.
Thank you.
All right.
Mrs. Carpenter?
While we're talking about homework for the superintendent, can we also get, with some of the monies that was identified through Mr. Olympio and the administrative part, some of those monies that we can possibly switch over to reduce some of these reductions? Could you look at those figures again?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Huckman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Along the vein, that vein, I, you know, in the asterisk items where we're going to utilize some grant funding to pay for or offset some of the reductions, can you give us a little more detail at our next meeting as to what opportunities we're not going to experience as a result of that? In other words, what other, what, what could we have used that money for, for those grants? Or what are we using that money for under those grants that we're not going to have in the future? And then I know in reading through the capital wish lists from the various principals, there seem to be some themes with regard to gymnasium floors, sanding, and relining, and polyurethane, and through the chair, to the chair. Is that something that tradespeople within the city are capable of doing at a cost of materials as opposed to having to hire someone? And I don't know the answer to that, and I don't want to, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but just a thought. It just seemed to be a, a theme among some of the older, particularly elementary schools. And lastly, Mr. Smoyer in particular, in his capital improvement request is, and it's low on the list, I don't know if they're prioritized, is looking for some modulators because space is not available within the McCarthy primarily, I suspect due to the integrated preschool that's there. And, you know, talked about some, I think, IEP meetings that are taking place in not-so-private space, which is a little concerning. Are any of these modulators in the budget as we have it now?
May I speak to that?
To the first point, I can find out about gym floors. I don't know yet, but I can find that out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
A couple of responses. With the, with the proposed cut in the maintenance budget, some of those jobs that we would like to do won't be able to be done.
Yeah.
To the point about modulators, there are no modulators in the budget. They're very, very expensive. Modulators usually become permanent as opposed to portable. And it is a good point, however. One of the reasons that I'm moving special ed to the high school, which has the room, is to open up three classrooms at the West. And we're going to think about some of the possibilities and how to use that space. You know, it's possible we could split the early childhood program and move it to the West to open up some classrooms at the, at the McCarthy. I will tell you that this year I had to cut the library at the McCarthy in half in order to open up another kindergarten. So we, we partitioned the library, and on one side of the library, we had a new kindergarten class because his kindergarten classes were just so oversubscribed, which scrunched the library a bit. You know, I'd really like to reopen that library space and have a classroom or two for him to utilize, but I can't promise that right now.
Yeah, no, and thank you for anticipating my follow-up question, which is what's the plan? Because I didn't think we were going to get the modulars, so, but we can't have IEP meetings. Things that need to be private need to be private.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Mr. Miko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair to Dr. Levine. Dr. Levine, could you also reach out to Representatives Walsh, Speliotis, and Senator Lovely to see if there are any updates on funding, other than circuit break or maybe some of the funding that, that impacted us in terms of low income to poverty? I know there was a, there was a change last year, and there's something brewing now. Possibly there might be more funding available to us, maybe if we can get an update. I know, I mean, they're, you know, they work so hard for us on the education, and maybe they have an update that they can bring forward to us.
Actually, through the chair, if I may. Andrew might be able to answer some of that question. I do know that I read a, an update from Representative Speliotis's office today, this morning, that suggested that there was an increase in emergency aid for, particularly slated though for those of us who accepted an overload from Puerto Rico and from the U.S. Virgin Islands because of the hurricanes. So we have to look at our numbers and see whether or not we would qualify. I have no idea if we would qualify. There are other cities and towns that, that really took boatloads, literally, of people. We did not. We took some, but we have to see whether or not the impact that, that we have had qualifies for any additional funding.
Yeah. So we can look into all types of avenues down that road, but we just wrapped up our house budget now. And again, that's money that is still very fluid, as I'm sure you all know. But that's something we can look into. I can't make any promises, and it would obviously come down to the specifics of what's allocated if we would be eligible for it, but.
Right. Through the chair, just to wrap that up, Representative Walsh, Speliotis, and Senator Lovely have been tremendous educational advocates for us and have kept in touch with us on a regular basis, so I want to thank them publicly for all their hard work.
Any other thoughts or questions at this time? I know we have a meeting scheduled for the 15th. Is that our next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We have a regular school committee meeting on the 8th. Do we have subcommittees prior to that?
They have something scheduled.
We do?
Yeah, and I think there's a grievance, a short grievance scheduled at 6:45, I believe. I don't know if there's any subcommittee scheduled on the.
We have a business manager. Interviews.
We have interviews.
We have interviews at 4, 5, and 6, but that has nothing to do with the school committee except those people that are on the committee. And then at 6:45, or as soon thereafter as we could get here, I believe we have a grievance scheduled.
Okay.
But I don't think there's a subcommittee scheduled.
Do we have, do you know, for that meeting, the regular meeting, do we have any presentations or any particular issues you think could be lengthy?
We do not, that I know of, at this point.
Do we want to keep the 15th, or do we want to try to schedule maybe an hour on the 8th? I'll just throw that out there for discussion. If we wanted to maybe do the regular meeting at 7, and then maybe a budget meeting at 8. If, if we don't anticipate a lengthy school committee meeting, if there's not any presentations, you know, maybe we could grab an hour, continue the discussion.
I think that's.
I'll, I'll open that up for, Mr. Huckman, then Mrs. Dunn.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think that's a great idea. I'd at least post it and see where it goes, and if we have the opportunity to do it, I'd, I'd be in favor of that. And I'd say even if we don't, I'd, I'd like to receive as much of the information that we've requested tonight on the 8th as is available. And if we can go into a budget meeting after that, that's great, or at that time. So I, I think that's a good idea. And if also, we can, I don't mean to get off topic here too much, but we, we generally work these things backwards. In other words, we need to figure out a date by which we need to have a budget scheduled, public meeting and stuff. If, if on the 8th, you're able to give us that information, so make scheduling a little easier.
It'll come from your office.
Yeah, let me work on that. Thank you. That's, that's a good idea.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I will get as much of this information to you as I can tomorrow that you've requested. We should be able to gather that information up as quickly as possible. Just a question. The, since we're going to have a regularly scheduled school committee meeting on the 8th, budget can simply be on the agenda as opposed to a separate meeting. So it just becomes an agenda item, if you'd like to do it that way. Otherwise, it's, or is it a subcommittee of the finance committee? Because it wasn't, I don't think it was listed as a subcommittee of the finance committee. I think it was listed as a regular school committee meeting.
My thought is I'd like to have a scheduled budget meeting of the whole.
So would you want a?
So regular meeting at 7, budget meeting at 8.
So would that be a meeting of the finance committee and the whole?
I'd like to do it as a committee meeting of the whole.
Okay.
Yep. That's okay.
Yeah?
Mrs. Dunn?
Yeah, I, I'll be honest, I would like to have a budget meeting next Tuesday while we're, we're into this now. And having to skip a week, you know, trying to gear up again, it can be difficult so that you can remember all the details. As far as posting it, I'd say just post it the same way tonight was posted.
Okay.
It would be fine. And that way, you know, we can proceed. And thank you for any of the information you can give us ahead of time. It'd be very, really great.
And, Mr. Mayor, anybody that would like, has any thoughts on the budget, don't hesitate to get them to me so that we can put them on a list for public consumption.
Okay. All right, with that, why don't we adjourn to?
We're going to recess.
We're going to recess to May 8th.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll have a budget meeting scheduled at that time.
Motion to recess.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Huckman. Thank you, committee members.